Call this, reconvene the business meeting and call it to order.
Madam Chair, I'd like to move that we certify the executive closed session.
Can I get a second? Dr. Gabriel seconded.
Resolution certify an executive meeting of the school board of the city of Norfolk in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, whereas the school board of the city of Norfolk has convened a closed meeting on this date pursuant to an affirmative recorded vote and in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, and whereas section 2.2-3712 of the Code of Virginia requires a certification by the school board of the city of Norfolk, the such closed meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law, will therefore be resolved if the school board of the city of Norfolk hereby certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law were discussed in the executive meeting to which this certification resolution applies, and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convening the executive meeting were heard, discussed, or considered by the school board of the city of Norfolk. Basine?
Here.
Aye. Buffalo?
Aye.
Camson, oh, that's right, Camson's not here. Clanton?
Aye.
Gabriel?
Aye.
Jordan?
Aye.
And Martin?
Aye. Okay, thank you, everyone. So I have an announcement to make, something that we just learned, just coming out of closed session, is that Ms. Lauren Camson has written us each a letter, and she has written us a letter tendering her resignation from her position on the school board for Norfolk Public Schools due to health reasons, and it'll be effective September 29th of 2023. Ms. Camson has served on the school board. She was first elected in 2018, and then again in 20, what was it, 22?
Twenty twenty.
Just recently. And she was elected from Ward Five, but she has over forty years as an educator in our district, and to say that this is her passion, you just cannot pronounce that enough and emphasize that enough. She was extremely passionate about school safety and security, and really spearheaded the Safe Schools Task Force. She was a reading specialist at heart, and so that was, you know, really the foundation of all learning in her eyes, and proper instruction of our children, and it was a very tearful resignation, I have to say. But we wish her the best, and I think that she has definitely left her mark on this board and our school district. She was very strict on accountability, and having a plan, and being brief. So with that, I will just say, we are gonna miss her, and we will follow the proper protocol to find a replacement, which will be announced at a later time. All right, all right, so on with the meeting, because she would hate if we weren't on time. We're gonna miss her very much. So up next, we have the swearing in for our school board student representative.
Madam Chair, you need to call to order and take another roll call to officially start the meeting.
Oh, sorry. I get ahead of myself. These details. All right, I call this business meeting to order, and Ms. Tanner, please call the roll. Basine?
Here.
Buffalo?
Here.
Clanton?
Present.
Gabriel?
Present.
Jordan?
Here.
And Martin?
Present. Okay. So again, the swearing in ceremony for our school board student representatives, and I'm gonna turn it over to Dr. Birdsong.
Good evening, everyone, and thank you for being here this evening. We are so fortunate and blessed to have two brilliant students with us tonight, and Ms. Tanner, our school board clerk, is going to preside over their induction ceremony this evening. Ms. Tanner?
Thank you, Dr. Birdsong. I'd like to ask all board members and Dr. Birdsong to come stand in the step and repeat for a moment. And while you're making your way there, after they get there, we want Cameron Sater and Abigail Jackson to meet us at the end of the step and repeat, and we'll start the swearing in ceremony. And family members of Abigail and Cameron, are you here this evening? Because you're welcome to join us. And our first person to come sign tonight, come stand right here.
I do solemnly swear or affirm
That I will support
That I will support
The Constitution
The Constitution
Of the United States
Of the United States
And the Constitution
And the Constitution
Of the Commonwealth of Virginia
Of the Commonwealth of Virginia
And that I will faithfully
And that I will faithfully
And impartially
And impartially
Discharge and perform
Discharge and perform
All the duties incumbent upon me
All the duties incumbent upon me
As a student representative
As a student representative
Of the school board
Of the school board
Of the city of Norfolk
Of the city of Norfolk
For a term beginning September 20
For a term beginning September 20
2023
2023
And expiring June 30
And expiring June 30
2024
2024
According to the best of my ability
According to the best of my ability
To help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Great stick.
Thank you.
You get to keep your pen.
Yes, you want to keep your pen.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Famous one day. You know, that was a joke. I have a long name, Cameron. Just bear with me.
Thank you.
Congratulations. I do solemnly swear
I do solemnly swear
Or affirm
Or affirm
That I will support
That I will support
The Constitution
The Constitution
Of the United States
Of the United States
And the Constitution
Constitution
Of the Commonwealth of Virginia
Of the Commonwealth of Virginia
And that I will faithfully
That I will faithfully
And impartially
And impartially
Discharge
Discharge
And perform
And perform
All the duties
All the duties
Incumbent upon me
Incumbent upon me
As the alternate student representative
As the alternate student representative
Of the school board
Of the school board
Of the city of Norfolk
Of the city of Norfolk
For a term beginning
For a term beginning
September 20, 2023
September 20, 2023
And expiring June 30, 2024
And expiring June 30, 2024
According to the best of my ability
According to the best of my ability
So help me God
So help me God
Congratulations.
Coming. What are these pens, Ms. Tanner? All right, thank you very much. There we go. Long name. Blame my husband and my pants. We're gonna take Ms. Tanner off of pen duty. Okay, all right, thank you very much.
This is the rollers. Let's give them another round. Ms. Washington. Like I had to do the Olin Mills.
So Cameron, your first order of business is to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. You ready?
Yeah. Good evening. We request that all cell phones and pagers to be turned off or to vibrate during the course of this meeting. Thank you. Please rise and remain standing for the reciting of the Pledge of Allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may be seated.
Thank you. Well done. Okay. I just want to note, we do have an amendment to the business agenda. We have added our school board goals. We're voting on 5.07 on the consent agenda. So can I get a motion to adopt the business meeting agenda as amended?
I move that we adopt.
Dr. Gabriel?
I just want to reiterate that under the consent, those are the five-year goals.
Right.
Okay.
Thanks. Go ahead, Dr. Gabriel.
Okay. I move that we approve the agenda, business meeting agenda as amended.
Thank you. Can I get a second?
Second.
Second. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Clanton. Go ahead, Ms. Tanner, please call the question.
Basine?
Aye.
Buffalo?
Aye.
Clanton?
Aye.
Gabriel?
Aye.
Jordan?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye. Okay, up next, we have our superintendent's report, so please take it away, Dr. Birdsong.
Thank you very much. Good evening, everyone. Again, it's such a pleasure to be with you this evening. We have another exciting video for you this month. We changed it up a little bit from last year. What we've done is we've aligned our video clips to the goals of our strategic plan, so we can remind everyone monthly of what those goals are. So without further ado, please show the video.
For the first time ever, Norfolk Public Schools began the school year the week before Labor Day, but that's not where the changes ended. Whether it's a new specialty program, new faces in new places, or a new way to keep students and staff safe, this school year promises to be full of innovative beginnings. Over at Compass Academy at Ruffner, students in grades three through eight now occupy the former middle school as part of a brand-new specialty program.
I am super excited. I have been waiting the entire summer for the kids, all my kids, to be in one school and for us to get moving with our new school program. I'm looking forward to seeing them exploring their passions along their different pathways. I'm looking forward to seeing more of their smiling faces.
I'm just looking for the kids to have a great learning experience. We all know that a good pathway to life starts with a good education, and so we want to make sure that we give children as many options as possible to be their very best selves and have the very best life possible that they can, and that starts with a good education.
Many schools had enthusiastic guests on hand to welcome students back for their first day. School safety was emphasized with new equipment, and principals new to their buildings worked hard with their staff members to create an outstanding first day for students.
I think it's important to be out here this morning because we're welcoming our students back. We have a new weapons detection system. We're making sure that everything's running smoothly. The students have been extremely patient, and we're really excited to get this school year started.
Oh, we have so much going on on the first day of school. Since this is my first time at ADL with students, my biggest challenge was just not knowing what I didn't know, and just making sure that I had the right people in the right place to do the right jobs.
So far, very hectic, but good. We're making it happen. It's always my pleasure to greet students the first day, and I'm getting everything ironed out. So although I said hectic, if you looked around the building, you'd see that it's calm, smooth as glass. I'm now pumped and ready and ready to go. Great school year, no matter what.
Norfolk Public Schools athletics has started strong, as our student athletes are showing their competitive spirit on the field and on the courts. We will watch and update how our middle and high schoolers are doing throughout the school year.
Norfolk Public Schools welcomed over 400 new teachers and long-term subs to the division during the New Teacher Institute. This three-day orientation provided opportunities for teachers to learn more about NPS, visit a variety of vendors, and hear inspiring messages from two outstanding educators.
Well, I was trying to just encourage them to become the educators that these kids need by remembering your why, and why we do this assignment, why do we do this work. I wish somebody had told me this 27 years ago, but everything that I needed as an educator, I wanted to pour into these new educators today.
So my message was just having the teachers to realize the power of the profession, and sometimes, as they matriculate throughout their profession, it will get hard, but just to remember the impact that they'll have on student lives.
These teachers also got to meet some of their new colleagues and attend several informative breakout sessions, all designed to help acclimate them to teaching in Norfolk Public Schools.
I think one of the biggest things is to know that we're here for them, to mentor them, to provide the support they need to be successful educators, and then, most importantly, to give them the tools they need to educate our kids.
It's great, because I kind of get to see all of the new faces. I did, I was at Lake Taylor for a little bit last year, but it's good to see like who they're bringing in and kind of what to expect as far as like, how many new math teachers do we have to help us in the new year.
It's gonna help me become more familiar with what to expect with the new school year coming up in terms of what we teach and how we teach, and exactly like the role model that you want to set for your students for this coming year.
Norfolk Public Schools, the city of Norfolk, MacArthur Center, and over 50 community partners welcomed thousands of parents and students to the first-ever unity in the community celebration. During this back-to-school event, students of all ages received backpacks, school supplies, books, and valuable information about the upcoming school year. With over 2,000 backpacks handed out to excited students and parents, this event was a big success.
It's like you planned for 2,000, but you don't think you're gonna get it. We were blessed today. So I think we have really touched everybody's life today. I hope they really feel a sense of unity and that the community is really behind them, and they want their kids to be successful this year, because that's really what it's all about.
Everyone has formed together. So this is like an idea, a conception, that really came to life. So I am so grateful. The turnout is phenomenal, and I am so happy that the kids, this is who it's all for. The kids are able to get school supplies, and the parents don't have to stress during this economic crisis.
It's wonderful here at MacArthur Center with so many partners and organizers and sponsors for unity in the community to help our students prepare for the first day of school. We want to ensure that they're not only ready, but more importantly, they have the abilities, the tools, the resources to succeed on day one.
It's a nice backpack, you know, it fits well, and yeah, it's a bunch of supplies in here that help me out. It's a good event. It's a good way to get kids to like get supplies that they might not have, and get a good community together and just get everybody right.
Really, it's a blessing. It's a struggle when you have a lot of kids, and you know, the list of what you gotta bring to school is a lot. It's just astonishing that you have so many people coming to provide these resources, and you know, not just getting the kids excited for school, but the parents as well.
The Saturday before teachers returned to their buildings, over 150 volunteers from Wave Church got Sherwood Forest Elementary ready for the upcoming school year. This makeover included everything from beautifying the front of the school to helping teachers set up their classrooms.
Oh, it's wonderful. I mean, it really makes you feel appreciated, and we're very thankful that they do this every year. Our biggest task this morning was unboxing all the air purifiers that was received from the state. So they've got all those distributed and out into the classrooms at this point. Setting up classrooms, bulletin boards, cleaning desks, pretty much name it, they're doing it.
We've done this for 20-some years, so we've been a part of the school system, and I think one of the things that we want to do is just be a good partner for the schools. So we got a landscaping crew that is doing mulching and power washing the front of the school, and clearing up some beds.
These ladies right now, they're helping me to categorize my classroom library, and which is gonna be awesome, because when my children come in, I want them to be able to pull a book from each section, if it's a nonfiction or a fiction book. Day one, I'm gonna be ready, and so that's gonna help me. Just being able to get the logistics of my classroom is more than I can ask for on any given day.
It's pretty amazing, and honestly, like, we're here to be a blessing, but they have blessed us way more with all of the things that they do in our community, so we're super thankful. We believe that people do amazing things when they know they're loved, and we just want to make sure that every student, every administrator, every teacher know that there's a community that is cheering them on.
As part of Norfolk Public Schools' strategic plan, the division is utilizing new ways to protect students and staff in our buildings. This school year, we began using the Open Gate weapons detection system in all our schools to ensure that unsafe items don't enter buildings. After spending the summer training and learning more about Open Gate, the systems were deployed in schools across the city.
So Open Gate is new technology, different than any average metal detector systems. This is a weapons detection system designed to identify weapons of mass destruction such as guns.
So if it alerts, you have staff or security, we have that child or that student or that visitor go back through the system. If we believe it may be something in the bag, we'll have that person go back through the system without the bag, and if it doesn't go off, then we'll check the bag to make sure that there's nothing in there that would be harmful to the school staff or to the building itself.
In addition, we began the rollout of the Vigilon camera surveillance system in schools, which uses artificial intelligence to keep students and staff safe.
Just one particular big feature is the appearance search. AI can analyze a person, color of a person, color of a shirt, shape of an object, shape of a vehicle, and the color of a vehicle. AI is able to determine quickly exactly what is it that the particular user is searching for. Well, I think it's gonna make it a safer environment. The security staff and administration of the school can quickly access the Vigilon control center and prevent potential threats from occurring.
For our staff and security, it's meant state-of-the-art technology that has allowed us to be able to make sure that our property, our school grounds, are completely covered and watched for safety reasons. And if there is an episode or an event, we can solve it a lot faster, because we have eyes just about everywhere in the building. And to have this tool is just such a special thing to be able to make it safe for everyone.
For more stories and information about what's happening in Norfolk Public Schools, visit the NPS homepage and click on the YouTube link.
So in closing, I'd like to say that we have had a very smooth opening of the school year, and I want to thank our amazing teachers, our staff members, our building principals and assistant principals, our central office staff, and all of my executive-level team or executive leadership team. I thank you for your efforts, and I'm looking forward to a wonderful school year. So thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Birdsong and team. We appreciate that. It was a pretty exciting opening of the school year. You saw us at Granby High School, and I was just so amazed at how cooperative those students were. So, you know, it was the first day, so it was a little bit of backup, but I think it went very smoothly. So thank you all. Up next, we have our citizens' comment on agenda and non-agenda items. Ms. Tanner?
Madam Chair, for today's citizens' comments, we have six speakers. Today's speakers have signed up for public comments before the start of today's business meeting. If you would like to provide public comments, you are required to state the agenda items or topic you are addressing prior to providing your public comments at this meeting. When your name is called, please come forward to the speaker's podium, state your name, and whether you have a child in Norfolk Public Schools, or if you are employed by the district, or state your agenda items. One person is to speak at a time. If you are representing a group, state the group's name. You may ask your group members to stand in place to be recognized. Speaking time is limited to three minutes. A timer is set with an alarm that will signify the end of your speaking time. State your position and give facts and other relevant data. Avoid saying anything that identifies students or personnel information about individual employees. Personnel, disciplinary, and confidential matters may be addressed to the school board directly via email at schoolboard@npsk12.com. Comments should be addressed to the board and not addressed to an individual member. School board members do not respond to public comments at the time they are given. Any written statements or supporting materials should be given to the clerk. Dr. Martin, our first speaker for today is James Parker, followed by Hunter Knopf Singer.
James? Good evening, sir.
Good evening. Good evening, Superintendent Dr. Birdsong, Chair Dr. Martin, and all members of the School Board for the City of Norfolk. Welcome to the 2023-2024 school year. My name is James Parker. I have been a teacher with Norfolk Public Schools for five years. I currently teach second grade at Chesapeake Academy Elementary School and serve as the grade-level chair. We should all work together to nurture our new incoming teachers as well as appreciate our veterans, after all. We are all in this together. In addition to teaching, I have ascended to the office of President of the Education Association of Norfolk, which is the local affiliate of the Virginia Education Association and the National Education Association, serving 133 cities across the state. I also serve as a board member for the Elizabeth River Uniserve, which includes the Education Association of Norfolk and the Chesapeake Education Association. Mr. Patrick Berry serves as Vice President of the Education Association of Norfolk. He is a seventh-grade teacher at Norview Middle School, and our past president, Mrs. Helen Pryor, now serves as our Political Action Committee and represents us on the board of our regional affiliate, which represents seven cities all the way to Akimak. With the help of our EAN Board of Directors, we come from many diverse backgrounds and hold various positions in different schools throughout the district. We have many challenges that we will need to be addressed from our members and our union as a whole. I do indeed look forward to having further discussions about those issues and working through those issues successfully with the board. As we have in the past, last year, we presented the beginning of our resolution to you and look forward to further discussions and actions taking place through efforts for collective bargaining. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak. As always, thank you for all you do, and best wishes for a successful 2023-2024 school year.
Thank you.
Hunter Knopf Singer?
Good evening. Good evening. My name is Hunter Knopf Singer, and I'm a community organizer with the Sierra Club Virginia chapter based in Norfolk, and I am speaking tonight on the future of Maury High School. Over the past few months, we have worked with community members to conduct a community survey about the future of Maury High School. I'm here tonight to share the results so far from that survey for you to consider as you move forward with a decision about Maury. As of today, we have heard from current Maury High School students, current teachers and staff at Maury High School, Norfolk Public Schools' staff from other schools, Maury High School alumni, former teachers or staff at Maury High School alumni, former teachers or staff at Maury High School, former teachers or staff with Norfolk Public Schools within the district, parents of Maury High School students, and community members, for a total of 192 responses. I've provided a written report via email of the results of the survey so far. So rather than go through those results one by one, I wanted to summarize the results based on each community identifier. When asked about the condition of Maury, of the Maury High School building, all respondents were largely in agreement that the building is in bad or awful condition and that the condition of the building is affecting the learning experience for students and teachers. Among current students, staff and Maury, staff at Maury and elsewhere in the district, and parents, the results showed favoring demolishing and rebuilding the school with repurposing the current building and building a new school also being a top choice. Former Maury staff favored repurposing the current building and constructing a new school with renovation being the second choice. Community members and Maury alumni favored renovating the current building with repurposing and constructing, constructing a new school being the second choice. When considering the redevelopment of Maury High School, it's also important to discuss the sustainability of the building. As I'm sure you are aware, net zero schools are more cost-effective to operate and provide a healthy learning environment for students and staff. Across all respondents, clean energy and sustainability was indicated to be very important, or at least somewhat important. Lastly, in combination with the redevelopment of the physical building, we asked community members how they felt about renaming the school. In 2020, the Norfolk School Board agreed to change the name of Maury High School due to Matthew Fontaine Maury's ties to the Confederacy and his advocacy for expanding the industry of slavery. A majority of students, current staff, parents, and staff from elsewhere in the district said they would support renaming the high school and offered potential names such as Ghent High School and Norfolk High School. We share these results tonight in hopes that the school board will listen to community members and those that are most directly impacted by the redevelopment of Maury High School as you move closer to a decision. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Debbie Forehand, followed by Liz Albert.
Good evening. Good evening Chairman Martin, Vice Chair Buffalo, School Board Members, and Dr. Birdsong. My name is Debbie Forehand and I am the President of the River Forest Shores Wayside Manor East and Place Civic League. As you may recall, I spoke to you at the August 16th meeting about the disposition of the Easton Preschool. In those remarks, I mentioned the numerous times I have contacted the school board asking about the process for determining what is going to happen to that building and how my inquiries have been ignored. Well, I'm back again because I still haven't received an official response. However, since that time, I've been advised by individual members that the proper protocol is that the school board chairman respond on behalf of the board. So, Dr. Martin, I ask that our Civic League receives a formal response regarding the process of the school board will determine the fate of the Easton Preschool and the likely timing of that decision. We feel strongly the school board should retain the building based on long-term projections combined with the short-term residential growth that is now occurring in Eastside Norfolk and look toward an interim use. Our arguments may or may not merit with, have merit with you. We would like to know whether you agree with them or not. I said it last time and I will say it again. This Civic League has been a friend of the Norfolk City Public Schools. During this past budget cycle, our Civic League lobbied extensively for improved capital improvement of schools. We believe that a strong school system is the absolute best economic development engine a city can have. Cruise terminal improvements, new city streetscapes, and a facelift at St. Paul's area will never bring to Norfolk what a strong school system will. We will be your friends regardless of what you decide on the schools, on Easton Preschool. However, we feel the school board needs to be candid with its friends and not obscure. Just give us straight talk, not the cold shoulder. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you.
Liz Albert?
Hello, I'm Liz Albert. I'm a member of the River Forest Shores Wayside Manor East and Place Civic League. I have no children in school, but I'm here to talk about lobbying for more funds for Norfolk Public Schools. For years, we have spoken at city council meetings and at budget hearings concerning the lack of funding for both capital and operating for Norfolk Public Schools. And, but we're your friends and we want to help out. Just this past year, one of our members found $11 million that was missing from the budget that was yours, the schools. They caught that. It was missing, but then it got found again. So that's really nice and it appeared in the budget, but $11 million. We hope that in the coming budget year, the school board will collaborate with residents to seek resources designed to deliver the kind of school system this community wants and deserves. To have an effective partnership, here's what we would need to lobby on your behalf effectively. The school board needs to educate the city council on the process that cooperative strategy is using to determine how schools can, can be closed or consolidated in a manner which helps ensure that negative impacts are mitigated as much as possible. Also, the board should invite city council to tour several schools with them so that council members know firsthand the physical state of those schools, which will likely to remain open. If city council understands the aim, a smaller but strategically designed school system, they are much more likely to be supportive. Absent bringing council on board, the citizens are not going to be successful lobbying for increased capital improvement because council will use the slowness in closing schools as a club to beat back increased investments. In fiscal year 2024, there were no unfunded capital improvement projects for Norfolk Public Schools. Either you didn't ask or it didn't, they didn't get your request. We need the board to specifically ask the council for the capital improvement funds required. Let them be the bad guys to say no to better schools for kids. We cannot advocate on your behalf without this crucial step happening. We all agree that the revenue sharing formula needs to be adjusted to the school's advantage. We want to make this a reality. But it is imperative that an increase in the local contribution be requested by the board to city council in a timely manner and according to the procedure outlined on page 689 of the adopted budget for 2024. It is important to note that the taxes need not be raised to accommodate for this. Due to the large increase in real estate assessments over the past several years, a tax rate reduction for fiscal year 2025 is a possibility. But many would rather see revenue sharing formula increased, but we cannot advocate for this without your help. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Melissa Garman, followed by Vicky Greco.
Oh, okay. Wait, let's pass it down. All right, good evening. Good evening. I wanted to talk about last, I'm sorry, Melissa Garman, Norfolk resident, teacher for NPS. Here of my own accord. I was here for the September 6th working meeting that you just had where a significant amount of time was spent discussing academic gaps. Essentially, members of the board were hoping to see at-risk groups of students make gains at a rate of 5% more than their comparison groups. The board said it wanted to be bold and daring, and I like that because it reminds me of Brené Brown books. But as I look at our staffing and teacher shortages, I have to ask how? How can we offer equitable opportunities for success without an equitable distribution of qualified certified content teachers? If schools with the most need also possess significant teacher shortages, how can we expect them to make those gains? So I'm asking, I'm here with an idea. And I want you to bring to mind the Ignite Initiative that we had for Lindenwood Schools or that the board of this district had. September 12th was our 10-day count. We now know where all of our students are. We should already know where our gaps are and we should already know where we need teachers. Is it not possible to create a new initiative where we offer voluntary one-year transfers with a bonus to certified content teachers because they won't want to go if they don't get something out of it, right? They're comfortable where they are. In order to, for one year, in the Navy, we call this Temporary Additional Duty. You know, I'm all, I'm a veteran. But a one-year transfer to move those teachers to places where there's greatest need, where right now we might have long-term subs, offer that one-year contract. And then before the voluntary transfer window opens, have them make a decision, would they like to stay where they've been or would they like to go back to their home school? If you do that before the voluntary transfer window, then you know where your openings are going to be before that voluntary transfer window opens. Now, how are we gonna pay for these bonuses? What I gave to each of you, I took the VDOE vacancy rates, the vacancy rates that were reported here, March 15th. I found the cheapest rate of hire across all the pay scales for those vacancy categories. If we go by the NPS numbers from March 15th, it looks like we have an excess in our budget of $17 million and I rounded down to give us some wiggle room. If we go by the VDOE numbers, it looks like we have an excess in our operating budget of 22.4. That's about a $5 million window which should cover the long-term sub pays and the pays that teachers are getting to cover classes. I just ask that you consider it. I want to help you make that goal happen. If not this school year, maybe we can look at it for the upcoming school year. Thank you.
Thank you.
And we have Vicky Greco.
Good evening.
And happy 16th day of school, Dr. Martin, Ms. Moore Buffalo, School Board Members, Dr. Birdsong, and especially grateful greetings to our student representatives on the board, Mr. Sater and Ms. Jackson. My name is Vicky Manuga-Greco. I'm a Lake Taylor alum and an NPS parent of two gainfully employed graduates beginning their careers and one high school senior who's doing all he can to prepare for the end of his high school career, graduate, and move on to college. Accordingly, this is my last year on both the Special and Gifted Ed Advisory Committees after serving multiple terms and collaborating with other community volunteers. As we like to say at our CAC and GAC meetings, we invite all parents and stakeholders to look for our meeting notices under the Learning Support, Special Ed, and Gifted Ed Department tabs of the NPS website. Membership is not required to attend our public meetings and observe our advisory work, development of board reports, and also join in discussions about meeting the needs of all our students. At our last GAC meeting on September 12th, we had small group discussions to strengthen goals to ensure they're smart, specific, measurable, achievable, relevant, and time-bound. These goals will support the strategies outlined and implemented and for planning as part of the local gifted plan adopted by this board in 2022. That said, I was glad to watch from home the governance discussion at your first work session of this school year on September 6th and hear the very extensive deliberations around the board's priorities and five-year goals that focus on closing student achievement gaps by setting authentically meaningful goals that accelerate the academic success of our students who historically fall behind, especially in the years marked by COVID and all the educational, economic, and social turmoil brought about by the pandemic. So thank you, school board members and administration, for your diligent and relentless work this year to make significant history by establishing courageous goals for effective oversight of our students and staff progress towards literacy, learning, and developing life skills beyond the classroom. Formless wishes for a great school year.
Thank you.
And this concludes our speakers for the evening.
All right. Thank you very much, everyone. Up next, we have our consent agenda. Can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Madam Chair, I move that we approve the consent agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Clinton. Can I get a second? I second that motion. Thank you, Ms. Bassin. Go ahead, Ms. Tanner.
Bassin?
Aye.
Buffalo?
Aye.
Clinton?
Aye.
Gabriel?
Aye.
Jordan?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye. Okay. Thank you very much. That consent agenda passes. Up next, we have our monthly financial report by Ms. Spivey. How are you this evening?
You can begin whenever you're ready.
Thank you. One second. Good evening, Chair Dr. Martin, Vice Chair Moore Buffalo, Dr. Birdsong, and all of our school board members. Tonight, we'll review the monthly financial statements that go through, from July 1st through the end of August. As with previous reports, this report reflects July through August transactions that were recorded on a cash basis as of September 13th. On the, on page two, the slide that we're looking at, we show our general fund collections for the first two months totaling $53.3 million, which represents 13.4% of our $399 million budget. As with prior years, these collections are based on cash collections and, and show no accruals of, of revenues. On page three is a graph that to the, to the right shows our, our full budget, which is very close to 399 million, and the two months of revenue at 53.3 million. And in addition, it shows our expenditures at 34 million as of the end of August. The 34 million is 8.5% of our, of our budget, of our general fund budget. And during the previous two years, spending through August 31st has ranged between 6.1 and 7.6% of our budget. Spending this year is ahead of the previous two years. On page four is a graph that shows both revenues and expenditure trends for this year and the previous two. The, the monthly trend appears in green. So you can see on, as far as revenues go for the month of August, it's slightly below the trend, but that's because the month of February was higher than the trend. A lot of these things are based on, revenue receipts are based on timing. On the expenditures, which are the bottom of the page, you, you can see that our expenditures are trending, at this point in time, are trending higher than the previous year's In looking in your package on page six are the more detailed reports where we show our, our revenues and expenditures broken out by, by fund, the general, we show the general fund and the school nutrition fund. Both of those are annually adopted funds. And, and then also we show the detailed breaking things out between our functions and our objects on the remaining pages. There were no general fund transfers exceeding $50,000 during the month of August. And, and Chairman Martin, that concludes my formal presentation, but I would be happy to entertain any questions that anyone may have.
Thank you very much. Any questions about the financial report? Go ahead, Ms. Bassin.
Thank you for the report. I just have a quick general question. So when, when are we expected to get the update on our status on the use of our ESAR and federal funds? Is that next month or?
The, so those funds, you know, with some of those funds, the expenditures end this, this month.
Yes.
And, and so yes, we will, we will report that out in the first of the following month.
So, okay, so October, we should get that in the, with the monthly financial report? So, okay, so October, we should get that in the, with the monthly financial report?
If that's in alignment with our regular quarterly schedule.
Yeah, I'm trying to remember, yeah, when that would.
I just can't remember right offhand, but we're gonna be on schedule
On schedule to, okay.
To provide you that quarterly report as we always done.
And then because the timing of it ending in, at the end of September, is there a final report that will go back? That is necessary to go back to the state along with that? That we, are we required to do anything with that, with the ESER funds? I'm trying to remember.
Not at this time.
No, okay. All right. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
I move that we approve the financial report subject to audit.
Second.
Dr. Gabriel made the motion and Mr. Clanton seconded.
Bassin?
Aye.
Buffalo?
Aye.
Clanton?
Aye.
Gabriel?
Aye.
Jordan?
Aye.
And Martin?
Aye. The financial report passes. Thank you very much. That is all we have today. So I want to thank everyone for coming out and having a great meeting. And I appreciate the comments from the, the community as well. All right, have a safe trip home. Meeting adjourned.